Good afternoon, everyone. The September 14th, 2020 meeting of the Seattle City Council will come to order. It is 2:00 PM. I'm Lorena Gonzalez, President of the Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Juarez.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis. Councilmember Morales.
Here.
Councilmember Mosqueta.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Sawat.
Here.
Councilmember Strauss.
Present.
Councilmember Herbold.
Here.
Council President Gonzalez.
Here.
Eight, Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Presentations, I'm not aware of any presentations. Approval of the minutes, there are no minutes for approval at today's meeting. Adoption of the referral calendar. Before we move for the adoption of the introduction and referral calendar, I want to take an opportunity to recognize Councilmember Sawat, who has a short statement to make regarding Council Bill 119891, on which it appears on today's introduction and referral calendar. Councilmember Sawat, you are recognized in order to make comments before we consider the introduction and referral calendar.
Per ethics rules, I have been asked to recuse myself from any votes relating to this bill. So I'm assuming I'm not able to, I should not, I should recuse myself from this particular vote.
The, our ethics officer has indicated that you are ethically able to take a vote on the introduction and referral calendar if you wish. But if you want to be careful and judicious and would rather not do that, then, then it would be important, I think, for you to state your preference on the record.
Yes, per that, I would prefer to recuse myself from this particular vote.
Great, okay. So Councilmember Sawat, Madam Clerk, will be recusing herself from voting on today's introduction and referral calendar, which includes the introduction and referral of Council Bill 119891 related to legal defense for Councilmember Sawat. Okay, if there is no objection, the introduction referral calendar will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the introduction referral calendar is adopted. We do have one small amendment to the approval of the agenda, as mentioned by Councilmember Lewis during this morning's council briefing. So we will consider that amendment shortly. But first, I will put the agenda before us. So I will move to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. Councilmember Lewis, consistent with your comments at council briefing this morning, I'm going to recognize you in order to make a motion with regard to Agenda Item 2.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to amend the agenda by removing Item 2, Resolution 31966 from today's meeting agenda.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any additional comments on the amendment? Hearing none. Just for the viewing public, we did have an opportunity to hear specific comments from Councilmember Lewis as to the intent and motivation for removing Agenda Item 2. And so we've had an opportunity to discuss this particular amendment to no longer consider Resolution 31966. Hearing no additional comments on the amendment, I'd ask that the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the amendment.
Juarez.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales. Mosqueta.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawat.
Sawat is recused, Madam Clerk.
I thought this was on the agenda. I'm sorry, I didn't realize.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead. I apologize. It is on the agenda, you are correct.
Thank you. Sawat.
Aye.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Nine in favor and unopposed.
The motion carries and the amendment is adopted. Are there any further comments on the amended agenda? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the amended agenda?
Juarez.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Mosqueta.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawat.
Sorry, I'm confused now. Am I allowed to vote on this one?
Yeah, it's the agenda. I apologize, I create, we moved past the introduction referral calendar so quickly that I even forgot we were on the agenda part, so yes.
Same here, yes.
Thank you. Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Nine in favor and unopposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we will open the remote public comment period for items on the City Council Agenda, Introduction and Referral Calendar, and the Council's 2020 Work Program. I continue to ask that everyone continue to be patient with us as we continue to operate this system in this virtual world and navigate through many of the changes that continue to occur. We are continuously looking for new ways to fine tune this remote process and adding new features that allow for additional means of public participation in our council meetings. It does remain the strong intent of the City Council to have public comment regularly included on our meeting agendas. However, the City Council does reserve the right to end or eliminate these public comment periods at any point if we deem that the system is being abused or is no longer suitable for allowing our meetings to be conducted efficiently and in a manner in which we are able to conduct our necessary business. As usual, for today, I will moderate the public comment period in the following manner. Public comment period for this meeting is 20 minutes, and each speaker will be given two minutes to speak. I will call on each speaker by name and in the order in which they registered on the Council's website. If you have not yet registered to speak but would like to, you can sign up before the end of public comment by going to the Council's website at seattle.gov/council, that's C-O-U-N-C-I-L. The public comment link is also listed on today's published agenda. Once I call a speaker's name, staff will unmute the appropriate microphone, and the speaker will hear an automatic prompt of you have been unmuted. At that point, the speaker should press *6 on their phone in order to begin speaking. Again, as a reminder, once you hear you have been unmuted, the speaker should press *6 in order to unmute themselves and begin speaking to an item on the agenda, part of the introduction referral calendar, or the Council's 2020 Work Plan. I'd ask that speakers state their name and item that they are addressing. And as a reminder, public comments should relate to an item on today's agenda, the introduction referral calendar, or the Council's 2020 Work Program. At about 10 seconds, the speakers will hear a chime. That chime indicates that the, that the speaker has exactly 10 seconds of their allotted time left and should begin the process of wrapping up their comments. If the speakers do not end, end their comments at the end of the allotted time provided, the speaker's microphone will be muted to allow us to call on the next speaker. Once you've completed your public comment, we'd ask that you please disconnect from the line. And if you plan to continue following this meeting, you can do so via Seattle Channel, Channel, or one of the listening options listed on the agenda. I will now open the public comment period. And it is 2:08 PM, so we will go until about 2:28 PM. Again, as a reminder, please remember to press *6 before speaking. And I'll call on two speakers at a time, so folks can prepare. Our first speaker today is Walker Thomas, followed by Hayden Bixby.
Hello, my name is Walker Thomas. I live in the 3rd District here in Seattle, and I'm calling in to remind the City Council about their pledge to defund the police. The city still demands it. People are still out here marching every day. Just yesterday, I watched six police cars arrest a homeless person next to my house who had stolen food from the Safeway. This is an unbelievable waste of money. I work in a homeless shelter. I know how desperate we are to actually provide services for the homeless, not just arrest them in some sort of never ending carousel of misery. They're using way too much of our money. They're attacking protesters. Our demands haven't changed. You need to override the veto and give the people of Seattle what we're asking for, to fund SPD by at least 80%.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Hayden Bixby, followed by Monisha Singh.
Good afternoon to the council members and to the members of the public in attendance today. My name is Hayden Bixby, and I'm here to speak briefly on behalf of the Resolution 31967, under consideration today to rename 28th Avenue Northeast to Hayashi Avenue in honor of the family who once owned the land on which it sits. Shizuo and Yeko Hayashi and their five children lived on Lake City Farm there in the 1930s, and they were, as far as our research can tell, civically engaged and generous neighbors. According to both Imogen England's book and the City of Seattle's Treewalk Guide, for example, they donated decorative trees for the new Lake City School when it was constructed just down the street in 1931. Tragically, Mr. and Mrs. Hayashi, along with their five children, were removed from their land, home, and business in the early 1940s, relocated to an internment camp through our government's response to World War II. As it turns out, my own family was moving into the Lake City neighborhood at about that same time, and my own father toddled next to his mother every day over to Lake City School to deliver his older sister to kindergarten, likely enjoying the shade and beauty of the very trees the Hayashis generously donated. So when I was a new Lake City resident in 2018, and I stumbled onto the Hayashi story, I found something both personally and historically poetic about the fact that the Hayashi farm was located on the very site where our, in pre-COVID days, Lake City farmers market now stands. In order to begin a project to honor the Hayashis, I reached out to Chris Levison of Building Lake City Together and Mark Mendez with the Lake City Arts and Culture Initiative, and we formed a committee that also included Molly Humphrey at the Lake City branch of the Seattle Public Library. One of our first tasks was to attempt to find any descendants of the Hayashis. And to do so, we enlisted the help of Danielle Higa Etencho, who located Bonnie Takasugi, the daughter of the Hayashi's youngest daughter and one living child, Taiko. Taiko and Bonnie gave us their blessing to move forward with the project, as did every member of the Lake City business and nonprofit community with whom we discussed. On behalf of the Lake City team and community, I'm grateful to Councilwoman Juarez and Dean Elsa from her office for shepherding us through this process, and I thank the Council as a whole for its consideration and approval of this resolution.
In the. Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Monisha Singh, followed by Mike Stewart.
Hello, my name is Monisha Singh, and I'm the Executive Director of the Chinatown International District Business Improvement Area. Today, I'm asking Council to take the Seattle Small Business Pledge, which is at the top of your inbox and has over 500 signatures from local businesses. The pledge describes the essential needs for small businesses to survive and thrive in Seattle. Small businesses in Chinatown ID are experiencing traumatic events, including theft, break-ins, assaults, and harassment during the already largest economic crisis of our time. As we reckon with generations of systemic racism, we are left with redefining what public safety means, both existing and reimagined to our city. We ask that you take small businesses, its owners, employees, customers, and adjacent residents into consideration when assessing the public safety needs for everyone in this city. Confronting and dismantling systemic racism and providing a safe environment for our neighborhoods are not mutually exclusive. They rely on each other completely. I ask you to take the pledge and work with us on reimagining policing in our city. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Mike Stewart, followed by Mark Crawford.
Good afternoon, City Council members. My name's Mike Stewart. I'm Executive Director of Ballard Alliance, an organization that works to support the needs of Ballard's small businesses. Earlier today, you received a letter on behalf of 19 Neighborhood Business District Associations, as well as the Small Business Pledge. It's been signed by more than 500 small business owners and supporters from across the city. I'm speaking today to ask each of you to take the Seattle Small Business Pledge. At its core, the pledge is intended to highlight two fundamental needs for our small businesses that are working to survive the impacts of COVID-19 and the subsequent economic crisis. Small businesses in Seattle need adequate safety services to ensure clean, safe, welcoming, and vibrant business districts, and an assurance that employees and customers can frequent storefronts without encountering violent or destructive behavior. I encourage you to sign the pledge and begin working with the current administration to solve these important issues. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in, Mike. Next up is Mark Crawford. And then we will hear from, and bear with me, Eternally 12 Treehugger Mariah Colonized.
Hi, my name is Mark Crawford with the U District Partnership. Today, you are receiving the Seattle Small Business Pledge, already signed by over 500 people, and that list is growing. It calls on you to ensure that small business operators, their employees, and their customers can conduct their business with each other in safety. Please, hear these voices. Ensuring public safety is the most basic and essential service of municipal government. As you design a new model, sorry, my computers went out, a new model of public safety addressing past inequity and systemic injustice, this means that you must ensure the viability of our small business community. There is no either/or in this process. Small businesses and the people who work with them are the heart and the soul of our community. They are the gateway to opportunity for entrepreneurs and for workers. And yes, they've been devastated by the pandemic. If people are going to come back into our neighborhoods, if they're going to shop in our stores, eat in our restaurants, and use our services, they must feel safe. If not, our streets will continue to wither away. People will continue to lose their jobs, and many of our most vulnerable and struggling neighbors will fall further into risk. We call on you, take the pledge. Please, come together, council and mayor, and move Seattle forward. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in. And our last speaker signed up today is Eternally. Is Speaker Number 8 with us?
Yes, I am here. I accidentally registered twice. The second registration actually has my first name accurate.
Okay, go ahead, we can hear you, so time is yours.
So I am Eternally 12, polyamorous tree hugger Mariah Carey, reincarnated, oh, I have to apologize for that. Rainbow album, high note or low note, full lane cyclist, no helmet, seeking for brother husbands of the contest. That's my first name. I only have a last name. Anyway, I'm calling because literally Seattle needs to have solidarity with the other cities that have lowered the voting age to 16, but take it a step further and lower the local voting age to 12. I have actually made a YouTube video about this called Evolved Voting Age to 12. And Akwar McGraw, I'm probably pronouncing his last name wrong, but in the 90s, at the age of 12, he had already freed thousands of enslaved Indian children up in India after having his parents having sold him into the carpet industry at the age of four or six. And literally, the police state of that area continued to allow these parents to sell their children into slavery and then do nothing. And it was literally Akwar, at the age of nine, who began to fight against this system and to liberate these enslaved children. I mean, we could talk about Akwar, but we could also talk about Tamir Rice, murdered by the police state in Cleveland, Ohio, at 12. Children are being charged as adults. I don't know exactly at the youngest age of children who are serving life sentences in the American prison system, but they're definitely being charged as adults, even though they're children. So Seattle, you definitely have the power to lower the voting age to 12 this year, hopefully this month, because that would literally irritate it and make, it will irritate lots of the voters nationwide, if not worldwide. It will irritate them, the majority of the non-voters who actually are eligible to vote but are not voting. Did I run out of time? I must have ran out of time.
You have six seconds.
Oh, ranked swift voting, y'all can adopt that, too. You need to adopt the ranked swift voting locally.
Thanks so much for calling in. That is the last, excuse me, speaker on the public comment list that is both registered and showing as present on my list. So we're going to go ahead and close out the period of public comment and begin on items of business on our agenda. First up is payment of the bills. Will the clerk please read the titles? Title of the bill.
Council Bill 119. Council Bill 119880, appropriate management standard and claims for the week of August 31st, 2020 through September 4th, 2020, and ordering the payments thereof.
I move to pass Council Bill 119880. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that the bill pass. Are there any comments? Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Juarez.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales. Peterson.
Aye.
Sawat.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Nine in favor and unopposed.
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Committee reports of the City Council. Will the clerk please read Agenda Item 1 into the record?
The report of the City Council, Agenda Item 1, Council Bill 119869, relating to violations of civil emergency orders and pending Section 10.02.110 of the Seattle Municipal Code, establish enforcement actions for violations of civil emergency orders, adding a new section 10.02.120 to the Seattle Municipal Code to establish a separability clause to Chapter 10.02, repealing Chapter 12A.26 of the Seattle Municipal Code to provisions relating to civil emergency orders, declaring an emergency, and establishing an immediate effective date all by three-fourth vote of the City Council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will move to pass Council Bill 119869. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Councilmember Lewis, you are the prime sponsor of Council Bill 119869 and are recognized in order to address this item. We may have lost Councilmember Lewis, actually. All right. Sorry, folks, it looks like we lost Councilmember Lewis from the virtual meeting. So we're going to give IT an opportunity to go ahead and see if we can get him logged back in. He's calling in now, is what I understand he is doing. But Council Bill 119869, folks, was heard, I will, I will fill the time here, was heard in my committee on Friday, September 11th, this past Friday. We had an opportunity to be briefed by Karina. As you heard, Councilmember Lewis describe this morning, this ordinance really provides an enforcement mechanism for the city to actually create a system by which to enforce any potential violations of civil emergency orders that have been or will be issued now or in the future. As we know, during this COVID-19 economic crisis and public health crisis, we've had an opportunity to consider several civil emergency orders, attempting to regulate private industries. This is an opportunity for us to create some civil mechanisms by which to create enforcement of those emergency orders. And, and today, we have an opportunity to consider this. It did pass unanimously. Sorry, it was not considered in my committee for vote since it was referred to full City Council, but we did have an opportunity to have a full conversation and briefing on this council bill. And I will now hand it over to Councilmember Lewis to provide any additional remarks he might want to add. He has joined us now via phone. Councilmember Lewis, please.
Hey, thank you, Madam President. Hopefully, I'll be able to be back on in person in just a moment here. Appreciate your remarks. That was an excellent summary. I think I'll mostly stand by those remarks, given my comments last Friday in your committee, as well as my comments at briefing this morning, and just look forward to voting on this and, and updating the Seattle Municipal Code.
Excellent. Are there any other comments on the bill? Councilmember Lewis, I mean, Councilmember Herbold, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. This is more of a question. So given that we have passed a number of emergency orders already, and we are updating the code to say that there's a civil, there's an ability to issue or to pursue civil infractions for violation of emergency orders, will we need to go back and update the previously enacted emergency orders to reflect this, this new authority?
I'm currently working on that, Councilmember Herbold, with the mayor's office. We, we probably don't need to. I mean, it goes without saying, and I don't know if this is the basis of your question, but the law cannot apply retroactively to violations that had already occurred if they had. But, so I think going forward, it's, you know, once these, you know, go into effect, you know, folks will be on notice that this is a potential impact. But, you know, we're seeing if maybe it makes sense to, to reissue the orders or to somehow modify them to be in compliance, but it, it may not be necessary. But that might be a question for the City Attorney's Office and central staff as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Herbold, for that question, and Councilmember Lewis for the answer. Is there, are there any other comments on the bill? Okay, hearing no other comments, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Juarez.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales. Mosqueta.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawat.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Nine in favor and unopposed.
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Okay, Agenda Item 2. Item 2 has been removed from the meeting agenda, so we're going to move to Agenda Item 3. Will the clerk please read Agenda Item 3 into the record?
Agenda Item 3, Council Bill 119878, relating to City Employment Authorizing Execution of a Collective Bargaining Agreement between the City of Seattle and the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers, District Lodge 160, Local 79, and Ratifying Confirming Search and Prior Acts.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to pass Council Bill 119878. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. As sponsor of the bill, I'll address it first and then open the floor to comments. This council bill authorizes the execution of a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Seattle and International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers, District Lodge 160, Local 79. The parameters of this collective bargaining agreement were approved by the Labor Relations Policy Committee, and its key agreements include the following terms. The agreement is a three-year agreement on wages, benefits, hours, and other working conditions for the time period of January 1st, 2019, through December 31st of 2021. The bargaining unit includes approximately 40 regularly appointed city employees at the City of Seattle. And the agreement does include retroactive wage adjustments, like many of our other collective bargaining agreements for 2019 and 2020. And it also includes a re-opener on annual wage increases for the year of 2021. Finally, the collective bargaining agreement does include agreements on shared healthcare coverage payments and other matters, such as the employee contributions to the premiums for the Washington State Paid Family Medical Leave Program. And I recommend and encourage my colleagues to support the passage of this council bill this afternoon. Are there any additional comments on the bill? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Lewis.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Mosqueta.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sawat.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nine in favor and unopposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Agenda Item 4. Will the clerk please read Item 4 into the record?
Agenda Item 4, Resolution 31967, providing an honorary designation of 28th Avenue Northeast from Northeast 125th Street to Northeast 127th Street as Hayashi Avenue.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will move to adopt Resolution 31967. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution. Councilmember Juarez, you are the sponsor of this resolution and are recognized in order to address this item.
Thank you, Council President. This legislation, as you've learned, came from a resident, Hayden Bixby. Thank you, Hayden, for all your information and your public comment today This land was their home, and this was also their family farm, where they grew and sold produce and vegetables to the community. As you heard, they also donated decorative trees and plants to the community where there was a new school, whether there was a new school or other civic activity. Unfortunately, the Hayashi family lost their farm when they were interned by President Roosevelt during World War II through his executive order. After their removal, they never returned back to the neighborhood where they were once valued members. As you heard from Hayden this afternoon, she found this information, and she wanted to share it and wanted to do something about it, and shared it with the community, that we should acknowledge and honor the family that were treated so unjustly by our government. So, Hayden brought this history to the community, to the attention of the community, the Lake City community, and provided us with the background information about the Hayashi family, their land, their home, and their farm, and their contributions to the greater northern, North Seattle community. Therefore, and after, community leaders formed an exploratory committee to attempt to recognize the Hayashi family using SDOT honorary street name program, thank you, SDOT. Community members reached out to Dencho, an organization that is committed to preserving and honoring Japanese-American history in the region. Vinyal from Dencho was able to locate Bonnie, the granddaughter of the Hayashi family. Bonnie is the daughter of the last living and youngest child of the Hayashi family. They received a blessing from the family to move forward, and they started to reach out to the community members and organizations in the area to build support for the project. And we were happy that over 14 Lake City organizations supported the street renaming. Another community leader, I'm sorry, our friend Chris Levison, Let's Build Lake City Together, began asking for financial support from local businesses, and the committee started a GoFundMe to fund the installation and the manufacturing costs for the project. And just under, in 24 hours, as I shared this morning, they reached their fundraising goals with the generosity of over 30 individual contributions. So, the community, we hope, will be holding unveiling ceremony, and the public is encouraged to join while following the public health safety protocols, of course. I've been told that the granddaughter Bonnie of the Hayashi family will be in attendance, and so I'm really happy to hear that. SDOT is working with our office and the community to find a date to unveil the signs and honor the Hayashi family. At the time, as you heard me share this morning, we're hoping it might be the 25th of this month, but I'll let you know. Just as a side note, as we've talked about this for years, particularly in this council and particularly in our committee, this is just an example of how sometimes when you just recognize the past and our past wrongs, and you address the truth and the history, and you offer just a simple humane gesture, recognizing of a family, the Hayashi family, and just changing the street name to really reflect the history of that place, that sense of place, that sometimes that truth and healing goes a long way. So, with that, I recommend council affirm, confirm, I'm sorry, Resolution 31967. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Juarez, for bringing forward this resolution and for those comments. Are there any comments on the resolution from my colleagues? Looks like there are no additional comments. I want to thank you once again, Councilmember Juarez, for shepherding this through the city council process, and appreciate those who, like you, those who called in to give public comment in support of this resolution. At this point--
If I could just add, Council President, if I, I'm sorry, would you mind if I--
No, of course, please, last word is yours.
Oh, I'm sorry, you were going to do that anyway, I apologize. Again, you know, going through parks and going through SDOT, and we've certainly seen this in committee with native communities, we're doing this at Lipton Springs for the Duwamish community and other tribes. When you go through the city, I also want to thank Abigail Elkhawk, who had us take down some offensive signs that were up at Maple Leaf and up at the community center. You know, just going through the city and actually being honest and renaming the places and honoring what really happened there or didn't happen there, it is akin to just telling the truth and telling the history that we are on indigenous land, and also that there are other people here that have a history that had been erased, and their families and their legacies have not been marked or honored. So, with that, I'm hoping if my colleagues have other places and hear from other community groups and stories that we learned, and really, big thank you to Hayden for taking the time to do this and bringing this to community. I would really encourage my colleagues in your committees and your communities to work with our office, certainly, and so we can help you shepherd through this kind of, these kind of changing where we, what they say, decolonize, I guess, and rewrite and put in the right history, so we are more inclusive about everybody's place in this great city. And so, I will leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Juarez, for those closing remarks. Really do appreciate your work in this area and your constant reminder to say the names of those that are oftentimes erased by our history. Okay, it looks like there are no additional comments from any of my colleagues, so at this point, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution.
Juarez.
Aye.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morales.
Aye.
Mosqueta.
Aye.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sawat.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The resolution is adopted, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? All right, Report of the Land Use and Neighborhoods Committee, Agenda Item 5. Will the clerk please read Item 5 into the record?
I report to the Land Use and Neighborhoods Committee, Agenda Item 5, Council Bill 119-827, relating to land use and zoning, amending Chapter 23.32 of the State of Mississippi Code at page 208 of the official land use map to rezone land in the Rainier Beach neighborhood. The committee recommends that bill passes amended.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Strauss, you are the chair of the committee and are recognized in order to provide the committee report.
Thank you, Council President. CB 119-827 would rezone two areas of the Rainier Beach to facilitate the development of affordable housing in the neighborhood. The two rezoned areas are within a quarter mile along Rainier Avenue South, and total about 2.72 acres. One area is near the intersection of South Rose Street, and the other is at the intersection of South Cloverdale. The South Rose Street area is currently split zoned, and this proposed rezon would change a portion of it to Lower East 3, and another portion to Neighborhood Commercial 2, allowing for the offices of services that need to accommodate affordable housing to be present on site. Bellwether Housing is seeking to construct the affordable apartment building with family-sized two to four-bedroom units, serving households between 50 and 60% of the area median income. The South Cloverdale Street area is currently zoned Neighborhood Commercial 2, and would be rezoned to Neighborhood Commercial 2, 65-foot rather than 55-foot height limits. The Mount Baker Housing is seeking to construct a mixed-use building there with two-to-three-bedroom family-sized units, affordable also to 50 to 60% of area median income. Their proposal includes ground force, floor space for the Rainier Beach Food Center, operated by the Rainier Valley Food Bank. The Land Use and Neighborhoods Committee did hold a public hearing on this proposal in August, and we did not receive any opposition to these rezones, as well as OPCD has provided for the record, and the record reflects how and why these rezones needed to come through our committee at this time and in this manner. Thank you, Council President. That's the report from the committee.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss, for that report. Are there any additional comments on the bill? Councilmember Morales, please.
Thank you. I just want to thank the Land Use Committee and Councilmember Strauss in particular for inviting me to participate in the committee meeting last week and just share my thoughts. As he said, this is a legislative rezon that coordinates, that serves the strategic purpose of the city in terms of increasing affordable housing, meeting our goals for racial equity in the comp plan, and also providing really important services in an area of low economic opportunity and high risk of displacement. So, these are important projects that are underway and will be really critical to the neighborhood. In addition to providing housing, they will also provide a community food center with a commercial kitchen, provides more dignified shopping experience for the clients of the Rainier Valley Food Bank. Then, the housing project also could be slated to provide some childcare, which we all know is desperately needed in the city, a childcare facility. So, eager to support this, and I want to thank the Land Use Committee for the work that they did on this.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales, for those remarks. Councilmember Strauss, anything else to add?
Nothing further to add at this time. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you so much. Okay, seeing, and, oh, looks, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that there was other council members with comments, I apologize. Councilmember Mosqueta, please.
Just a quick note to say how excited I am to support these projects that pair affordable housing with co-located services and equitable development features like childcare and job training services, small businesses, incubation, and community space. We talked a lot about this in the last committee meeting, and council members, Morales and Strauss have already mentioned it, but I think that these are great examples of what we continue to strive to do in the city, to place these amenities next to transit. So, it's a really great opportunity for us to highlight all of the work that I think we envision when we talk about development done right and through the community lens, and it is possible because the Rainier Beach community has spent so many years advocating to advance, for example, as Councilmember Morales said, the Food Innovation Center in the neighborhood, while also investing in affordable housing. And we're doing this through the equitable development lens to ensure good jobs for community members. I am hopeful, though, that in the future, it doesn't take as long as it did to get this project underway, and that we continue to do everything that we can as this council continues to lift up priorities like this, to make sure that we're investing in what community has identified as priorities to prevent against displacement and also to create economic resiliency. This is a great example of that, and I want to underscore my appreciation for it, but also note, took a long time to get here, and next time, I'm hoping it won't take so long. So, thank you so much, and Councilmember Strauss, excited that you got this over the finish line. Appreciate it, happy to support.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Mosqueta. Any other comments on the bill? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Juarez.
Aye.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morales.
Aye.
Mosqueta.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sawat.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Folks, we have other business. I understand Councilmember Sawat has an item for other business. Please, Councilmember Sawat.
Thank you, President Gonzalez. I move to be excused from the city council meeting tomorrow, Tuesday, September 15, 2020, because I must legally recuse myself from the issue that will be under consideration.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded, and Madam Clerk, can you remind me, do I need to call this to a roll, or do I just need to call for an objection?
Councilwoman Gonzalez, Amelia Sanchez, you can do either or, you can ask if there's no objection, or you can ask us to call the roll.
Right. I will simplify this and say, is there any objection to Councilmember Sawat's request to be excused from tomorrow's special full council meeting of September 15, 2020, at 1:00 p.m.? Hearing no objection, the request to be excused is granted, and Councilmember Sawat will be excused from tomorrow's special full council meeting at 1:00 p.m. Is there any further business to come before the council? Okay, my further business is we got to get more childcare ASAP. Okay, colleagues, this concludes the items of business on today's agenda. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting is on Monday, September 21st, at 2:00 p.m. Of course, the city council will hold a special meeting tomorrow, September 15, at 1:00 p.m., and I hope that you all have a wonderful afternoon. We're adjourned, folks. Thank you.[1727.22]